Is Jake coming?
I thought his car was out there.
Yeah, his car is here.
Yeah.
Okay.
Looks like his car out there.
Is that his car out there, that red one?
Okay. Well, it's 6:01, I'm gonna go ahead and get the meeting started. We call a regular meeting order of October 9th. Mr. Zub, will you please lead us in the pledge of allegiance?
Sure.
Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please stay standing for the invocation.
Lord, we take some time to pause and just realize that you exist and that you're the one that's really in charge. And because of that, it implicates the way we understand our roles as leaders of this community. And I pray in this space that you would lead those who are leading. And may they hear you as they listen to each other, listen to the community, the concerns that are there. May they discern well, not just make decisions, but discern what it is that is best for this community and its flourishing. And, Lord, may we all just grow more like your Son Jesus because of it. And we pray this in his name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Pastor. Okay. Let's see here. Public discussion, this is the time for anybody? Oh, sorry, roll call, please. Geez, I'm getting ahead of myself.
Councilmember Dean Uker.
Here.
Danielle Graff.
Here.
Jake Parks. Vice Mayor Lilo Zubor.
Here.
Mayor Mike Ristoucha.
Present. Now we move on to public discussion. Public discussions for any item that somebody, that is not on the agenda. If it's on the agenda, we will address it at that time. I will give everybody who wants to speak five minutes to speak. A total of thirty minutes for the subject. If there's multiple people, please come up. You've got five minutes. We will let you know when four minutes comes up so that you can summarize your discussions. And then at five minutes, it'll beep or do something and we'll be done. So, again, if there's anybody in the audience, please come up, state your name, address. And we can't address you at the public comment section, but you can present it to us and we can follow up later on. So, is anybody in the audience?
Good evening, mayor, council, and community. My name is Jason Laughlin. I am a field representative for State Assemblyman Heath Flohr with a legislative update. We, the Assemblyman is proud that all five bills that he introduced onto the floor of the State Assembly were signed by Governor Brown this legislative cycle. AB 1914 allows excavators to utilize power-operated equipment to dig before uncovering utility, underground utility lines once the state excavation board establishes regulations. You're currently only allowed to use hand tools to dig unless you've already uncovered a line. This creates serious issue for efficiency and worker fatigue. AB 2561 ensures that the most updated, correct version of a birth certificate is available when a person goes to purchase a copy from the county clerk. AB 2600 streamlines the LAFCO process by allowing the Board of Supervisors to bring forward a motion to create an open-space district, like a park, for example. AB 2461 requires the DOJ to forward subsequent arrest information to the Department of Social Services, Medical Board, and, forgive me, the Medical Board. For example, arrest info being sent after the initial background check when someone is hired. This keeps the most vulnerable in our community safe. And AB 2989 establishes a framework for local governments to regulate the new emerging scooter market. In addition to that, the Assemblymen had two resolutions put forth. Resolution 181 would designate State Route 132 as Deputy Sheriff Dennis Wallace Memorial Highway. And Resolution 179, which would designate a specified portion of State Highway Route 88 as Deputy Sheriff Robert Paris Memorial Highway. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it, Jason.
My name is Mary Lynn Wheeler Reynolds, the lawful, outright owner of Lot 15, which I purchased over a decade ago from the builder, Mark Wilber, of McRoy Wilber Communities. I'm here today because, number one, I want to put on record that I own that land. I purchased it for $5,000. I want that to be on public record. It was purchased by myself solely from a separate Wells Fargo checking account, which means it's separate property. Although I am married, I filed for divorce, but the divorce was botched. The divorce documents were not signed by the judge. The entry of order was not signed by the judge. It was a botched divorce. The judge actually performed the wrong divorce procedure. After doing a lot of research, I found out the judge did the wrong divorce procedure. The judge played a little game, produced these fake divorce documents, and did not have the integrity to tell us at the time that he performed the wrong divorce procedure. His name is not entered, is not signed on page two of two of the entry order divorce document. It's not signed. And those of us who do our own little research, I found out that when a document is recorded, it is actually assigned an instrument number, a recorded number. It was not recorded. There's no number on here because it's fake. This is the divorce document, supposedly the divorce document. At the top, it's checked, it's identified, it's checked by the clerk, and there's a signature, which means that this document went through a double-checking. There's no excuse for it not to be produced correctly, generated correctly. Page 267, 00267, which I faxed to the police chief, there's no signature by the judge. I faxed it to the police chief for the first place because I was arrested by Ripon Police Officers twice. On March 23rd, 2016, Ripon Police Officers, two of them, trespassed upon my private property, Lot 15, harassed, intruded, interrogated me, and asked me about my presence on that property, which I own. At that time, I presented the two police officers a copy of my driver's license. By the way, I have two of them, two driver's licenses, which means I've been coming back and forth on that property for a decade, two different sets, two sets of five years. So, over a decade, I've been coming back and forth on that property. All of a sudden, I'm a trespasser. They came onto my property, they asked about my presence being on that property, they asked me if I lived there. I said, "No, I do not live here. I own the property. And by the way, I own property here. I own two pieces of property in San Jose as well. I started buying property right after I graduated from college from San Jose State University. In my twenties, I started buying property." So, I'm not new at the deal about buying real estate. I started very young buying property. So, I told those two, the two police officers, I showed them my driver's license, I said, "I don't live here, but I own the property." The police officer had the nerve to tell me, "You need, you should change your address because the judge has awarded this property to your estranged husband." The police officer had no proof, no documentation. I told the police officer, said, "Well, the judge did not sign the paperwork."
Mrs. Will, you have thirty seconds.
He ignored what I said and bullied me off my property, told me I had to leave without any documentation, without any paperwork, without any proof, without a warrant for my arrest, without estrangement order. These cops bullied me off my paper, off my property. I told him I was coming back. I came back that evening. I came back that evening, entered through a window of my property that I own. And by the way, I built that property.
Thank you, Mrs. Will, your time's up.
Okay, I'll be back.
Thank you, appreciate it.
And I don't want to be arrested again. That's why I'm here. I own the land. Ripon, you don't own the land, I own it.
Anybody else in the audience have anything that's not on the agenda they would like to address? Moving on, approval of minutes of September 11th, 2018? Oh, crap, hold on.
Where is the table?
Right there.
I'll move to approve.
Somebody did a second. Who was the second?
I did.
Okay. All the votes are in. Passes 4-0. Approval of the agenda as posted or amended?
Wait, is this where I pull the? Okay, I have three items I'd like to pull from the consent agenda. What have we been doing, this a year? Give me another year and I might have it right.
You're gonna get seen out and you'll forget.
Well, I know. 1.1A, 1.3A, and 1.4D.
Okay, anybody else have any items they want to pull? Okay, seeing none, do we have an approval to prove the agenda as amended?
It's amended. Give me a second.
We had one.
Okay. So, we've got that. Why don't we go through the items first and then I'll present the proclamations?
Okay. What? Oh, we gotta approve the consent.
Okay, approval of the consent calendar as amended?
Beat ya.
Thank goodness for Lisa.
It's only been a year.
Gosh, okay. 1.1A.
My question about 1.1A has to do with the sales tax. I noticed that it's lower now than it was at this time last year. Having dealt with various public agencies, is this a trend or is this due to timing as to maybe we're behind last year in what we're actually receiving?
Yeah, we understand, Lisa. Please tell me if I leave something out, but in May, the state switched to an automated system. And as part of that automated system, they're having some timing difficulties, some delays getting the information out. So, what you see in September 2018 does not include a portion of our sales tax receipts that was included as part of the September 2017 payment.
So, at some point, if, and when they get this worked out, there might be a corresponding jump of $100,000 and we're back on track?
Yeah, to give you an idea, I think in 26, 2017, it was about $160,000 that was included as part of that, that payment that we did not receive this most recent September payment.
Yeah, thanks for the question, because I had the same question. Kevin, I had him go back and look at what we got last year at the beginning versus what it shored up to be, and it upshored, shored up higher. So, I had the same question, good question.
Do you want to handle these one at a time or all of them at the end?
Let's do them all at one time.
All right.
Is that okay with you guys over there? Okay, gotta check with the bosses.
I know, I know.
1.3A.
My question is basically one of possible inclusion. On page 60 of the agenda packet, it's, I don't know what number it is in the policy, that's why, but it's item number six. It references council members and appointed whatevers and how they're gonna make decisions. My question is, shouldn't we put senior staff in there too? It's just, I'm just asking.
Yeah, the concern was that since we have the merit system, we didn't want to have a potential inconsistency with the merit system that governs our employees. So, we were concerned we'd have to meet and confer, number one. And number two, there might be inconsistencies between that ethics policy and their responsibilities under the merit system.
Can you give me an example? I'm not getting that.
Not immediately. But the merit system was carefully negotiated, as you know. And so, it has obligations for employees, discipline procedures and the like, and their obligation to conduct themselves ethically. So, the concern was that there might be an overlay and inconsistency between the two. Now, if you want us to go back and take a look at it, we can and identify specifics.
I don't, I'm not necessarily thinking that it's that serious a deal, but as I was reading through it, that was the only place that when I saw it, there was no senior staff wording in there. And when I read it, I thought, shouldn't that apply to them too? Everything else made sense.
Yeah, and you're talking in six about decisions.
Right.
And so, those are usually government decisions made by members of the appointed body or the elected body. So, that's why we kind of limited it there as well. Since your staff people don't make decisions.
Does it say government in their decisions?
It just says, "To celebrate their decisions, the merits and substance of the matter at hand."
Could we add some sign of an adjective in there to clarify, like policy or something so that, because what you're saying makes sense.
Yeah.
But when you just have the word decision, that covers everything.
Yeah.
I'm not gonna make a big deal out of it, I'm just asking the question.
I'm mulling what you're saying, but I'm not sure, I'm not sure I'm there with you yet. I still, I still don't know, I don't know that you gained that much out of it.
Okay.
In lieu of the, in light of the potential inconsistency.
I'm probably gonna move to approve it. You keep thinking, I'll keep thinking, maybe you and I can talk. We can always bring it back, right?
Exactly.
Okay.
Fair enough.
I want to add something to that too, because I looked at that and I was a little bit concerned that didn't include all staff. Well, the staff has their own, other than senior staff has their own, I don't want people to think if we don't include staff in there that they can be immoral and unethical and all that. They have their own guidelines they need to comply with.
Correct, and they have their own people they need to answer to.
Yeah.
And so, I, we don't want a situation where they say, "Well, our loyalty is to the ethics policy, not to the merit system." And that was a concern that we had in that sense.
But I want somebody, when they read this, they understand there is the ethic, some of that ethic stuff is in their merit system.
It is inherent and explicitly, yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
1.4D?
1.4D is simply a question of consistency because in one place, it says the security depo, and I don't, I don't know if I brought my notes, but in one place in the policy, it says that the security deposit will be $10,000.
Right.
And then in two other places, it says the security deposit will be $15,000.
Yeah, we, at the staff, we recognized that this afternoon also, and so, we need to make them consistent. It'll be $10,000 across the board.
Okay. That's it.
Okay. So, with that, do we have a motion approved?
I'll move to approve all three.
Okay. Motion passes. Now, we have some resolutions. Give them.
Proclamation.
Excuse me. First, I want to present a proclamation to Kai Deharth. Would you please come up? And Ethan Orcutt, will you please come up as well? Huh? Oh, okay, I'm being told where to go. We need to go over here.
You thought the mayor made decisions around here.
Hi, how you doing? How you doing? Want you guys to sit up here and turn around. So, these proclamations are for Kai and for Ethan, for earning, can you all hear me okay? For earning their Boy Scouts of America award for Eagle Scout. One of the things that's interesting, and I'm gonna tell you a little bit about, the Boy Scouts started in 1910, and what both these gentlemen have done has proven themselves in many areas, including leadership, community service, citizenship, fitness, outdoor skills, and has earned all the special merits, badges, that earned them the rank of Eagle Scout. Interestingly, only 5% of Boy Scouts earn Eagle Scout. That's a very small percentage, so you guys have done a very good job of doing what you did. A little bit about Kai. What Kai has provided as his project was an interactive human sundial for the community down at Stouffer Park. If you go down there, you can actually sit there and tell what time it is without your watch, so I appreciate that. And then Ethan has, same requirements, they both earn the same thing, but Ethan has completed the installation of ten geocache sites for the community to use. So, I guess if you're young, you kind of know what that is, because an old guy like me has no clue what a cachet site is. I had to look for it and still don't understand it. So, appreciate what you've done. I understand that is actually a pretty big deal for people to take a look at. So, what I'd like to do is do things. Number one, I'd like to, Ethan, I'd like to give you this proclamation and thank you. And what I want you to do, we all know what a sundial is, but when I'm done, I want you to explain what you did, what a cachet is, okay? And then Kai, congratulations to you as well. Appreciate it. You guys have worked hard and done a good job of earning that. So, if you want to say a few words, that's fine, but I do want you to explain a little bit about your cachet project.
I'd just like to say thank you to everyone who has helped me get this far. There's no way I could have done this on my own, and I appreciate all my mentors, teachers, leaders, and of course, my parents. So, thank you very much.
Yeah, I'd also like to thank everyone who helped me along the way, my parents and my grandma, in the crowd right there. So, a geocache is sort of a scavenger hunt, treasure hunt sort of thing that you find on GPS. What we did is we built, we built them inside valve boxes and inserted them into the ground. So, you go on the geocaching.com site and you type the coordinates into your geocache and you go and look for them, sort of like a scavenger hunt.
Oh, now it's boring. It's kind of like hide and seek.
Hey, I have a GPS on my car. Congratulations to both of you. Thank you very much. Alicia, would you mind joining me up here, please? And we're told to go to the middle, so we're gonna have to go to the middle here. This proclamation has to do with domestic violence, and we're proclaiming this month as domestic violence. Just a few words, I'm not gonna read the proclamation because we hand one every year, but, you know, I guess for somebody like me, it's really hard for me to understand how anybody could have domestic violence, whether it's a spouse, whether it's a friend, relative, whatever. It just breaks my heart even to think it exists. But it exists, we all know that exists. And I've got to tell you, hats off to you for doing what you do because it's got to be a very difficult thing to do. And I will tell you, you are a hero in many people's minds and hearts, and it's not only my honor to shake your hand and thank you, but it's my honor to hand this proclamation to you and thank you for everything you do. So, I'd like you to say a few words if you'd like. Thank you.
Thank you. So, thank you all. It's definitely an honor to be here to accept this. Domestic violence does cross all racial, cultural, age, gender, and socioeconomic boundaries. Like you said, it's something we don't want to think about, but it does happen all across the board. Domestic violence, however, is not just physical abuse. We have countless victims, women, men, and children, who suffer from emotional and psychological abuse as well. Every single day, we educate someone in our community who has been victimized by the cycle of violence right here in our county. Last year alone, our agency, Women's Center Youth and Family Services, we provided crisis intervention to more than 1,300 victims. Our emergency shelters provided 4,379 nights of refuge. And more than 50 children received support through our Just for Kids program, which is specifically designed to heal children who have experienced the trauma of domestic violence in their home. It's time for us to break this vicious cycle of violence, and all it takes is one voice. I'd like to invite all of you to join us on October 25th to show your support. Women's Center Youth and Family Services will be hosting a candlelight vigil to honor those who have lost their lives as a result of domestic violence. And that'll be at our agency at 620 North San Joaquin Street in Stockton from 5:00 to 7:00 PM. And again, I thank you guys, it's an honor to receive this.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Mayor Ristoucha has requested City Council consider this resolution opposing the San Joaquin County's commercial cannabis business tax, which is on the November 6th, 2018 ballot. If the tax passes, all types of medical and adult-use commercial cannabis businesses will be allowed in the county excluding outdoor cultivation and cannabis events. If the tax fails, the current ban on medical and commercial cannabis businesses in the unincorporated areas of San Joaquin County will remain in place. This was an important issue that was brought to me by Supervisor Nguyen, and I've asked Supervisor Nguyen to come, and if he wouldn't mind, please, coming up and explain, as you have, to us, you can do a better job than I can, I'd appreciate it.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm not sure I can do a better job than you can, but nonetheless, let me just, I'll try to generalize as best as I can. Starting back, actually, 1996, we passed the Medical Marijuana Compassionate Marijuana Act in this state. And for 21 years, we've had recreational marijuana in this state. And now, you know, with Colorado, Washington State, Oregon, and now California, we passed a recreational marijuana, whatever that means. And therefore, there have been some major changes in those states and certainly that are occurring in California. Prop 64 was, very simply, was to allow, and actually with the state's organization, to merge both medical and recreational adult marijuana into basically the same ordinances and oversight, et cetera. One of the things that also provided 64 is it allowed cities and counties to maintain the current prohibitions, which Escalon, Ripon, Lodi have, and certainly the county of San Joaquin. So, what this measure is proposing to do is to enact a tax, and if the tax passes, essentially, all marijuana businesses, you've already alluded to, will be allowed to operate within the unincorporated area, not in the cities. The concern has been expressed by some of my fellow elected officials, certainly in the cities, is that, you know, there's the opportunity for, if the county passes this, to actually set up shop nearby cities that currently prohibit it. So, that's the concern that we have. Even in Stockton, which has four dispensaries, Lincoln Village, if you're familiar with that, is county area, and there's already talk that if the county passes this, they'll set up a dispensary right in the middle of the city of Stockton, which obviously concerns those who are already approved through the city ordinance. A little background on what this will provide is that estimates, for example, for the county resources in regards to enforcing this particular increase of businesses within county, between the Sheriff's Department, the District Attorney, Environmental Health, Community Development, Public Works, County Council, we probably estimate it's gonna cost us eight and a half million dollars just to oversee. The estimated revenue generated by this is gonna be about 2.3, and that's based upon 20 applications or 20 licenses. And so, you can do the numbers. The fact is that what's happened in this state and happened in all the other states is this proposed avalanche of revenue that's come in never materializes. California estimated that first six months of this year that there would be $185 million of revenue generated. They hit 82. And unfortunately, every other entity that has proposed this and adopted it has done about 50% of the projection that they have presented to the public. The concern also is that, we talk about the legalization and business licenses, et cetera, but the fact is, our bigger problem is illegal, which currently are in the county and maybe to some degree, and the chief would know, in the cities. And that's probably a bigger problem in the county. Since 2011, we've, Sheriff's Department's eradicated about 612,000 plants. So, you can imagine what's going on statewide. And with this, what is shown in other states is when you make legal, marijuana grows, although we're not to the outdoor stage yet, we are doing indoor. It does confuse law enforcement from the standpoint that they don't know what's legal and what's illegal. And what's happened is certainly in some of the states which allow outdoor growths is they grow the illegal between the legal, and therefore, they escape enforcement for a number of years. So, what we're trying to do here is that myself, Mayor DeBrum, Mayor of Manteca, Mayor Nakaneishi from Lodi, Vice Mayor Holman from Stockton, and Bob Ellett, my counterpart supervisor from Tracy, are trying to educate the public, because most people, in fact, if you've gotten your ballot statement, if you read it, it doesn't even resemble something because it's very generic in regards to the presentation. And when I talk to people, you know, their first reaction is, "Well, let's pass it, let's stick it to them." Let's stick it to them and tax them on this particular thing. If the tax passes, marijuana will be allowed within an incorporated area. If it doesn't pass, we'll maintain the current prohibition. It's that simple. So again, what we're trying to do is educate the cities, the residents. And actually, in Escalon, in Ripon, in Lodi, they overwhelmingly failed, Prop 64 failed to pass. In unincorporated area, it was probably the largest percentage, 54 to 46, in regards to being against Prop 64. So this area, and certainly my district and unincorporated area are against this. But unfortunately, if it passes, it will affect them because it only applies unincorporated area or if they move close to adjacent city boundaries, which inevitably happens in all the other states and jurisdictions. So with that, I'll be glad to answer any questions you might have.
Well, I've got a couple of comments. It's interesting. I'm glad you brought it to our attention because all the research, you read about it, it's to help education and, you know, a lot of these really nice things when you read it. Every, now, of course, maybe it's the information that I'm reading versus the information I'm not reading, but when I did my research, there's never enough revenue to even pay for the police and everybody that's involved to make sure it's happening correctly, let alone enough money to pay for, just like you said before, to pay for anything else. So we can't even provide enough money for law enforcement to control it. So I'm glad you brought it to our attention. Thank you for explaining it. That's the only comment I have. Anybody else have any comments or questions for Supervisor Nguyen?
I have one question. This was passed by the Board of Supervisors.
Yes, three to two.
Can the other three assume that it's okay? That everything's going to work out?
I would just put it this way. It's all about the money. That's what it's all about. And what Mike was talking about in regards to the shortness of funds provided. If you look at Colorado, Washington State, and Oregon, and even California, and with this current measure in the county, there's always a hook. And what's that hook? It's education or children, every one of them. Before we started looking at this ordinance in regards to which way we wanted to go on this, we did a poll. And what we found is, is without the childhood education, the gang prevention, those types of things included, which after four years, it starts at 30% of revenues go to that. At four years, it's 50% of the revenues go to that. Without that hook, it wouldn't pass. So that's the real challenge, is educating people so that they know that by voting for it, because most people say they don't want it, at least the people in my district. But the other part of it is, is when they see it, they think, well, we'll tax it. Well, they don't understand because they think it's a done deal. Prop 64 passed, you know, it's all over the state. It isn't. And actually, only about, I don't know, maybe Mike, you would know it being on the City Council, but I think only about 10 counties have actually passed something to allow, you know, this medical or recreational marijuana to occur. And I think it's like less than 20 cities in this state have actually, you know, adopted all of those things. And my argument at the board has been very simple is that, okay, if you want to do it, fine, but let's wait a year or two and let us find out what everybody else's experiences are. Because you may not want to do it after you find out what's happened in some of these other counties. And that's what's happened. I mean, you can, Mike's done the research, but you can look at Colorado, Washington, Oregon. And if you read Colorado, which has been in existence the longest since 2012, they're saying, and this is from the superintensive schools, they haven't gotten hardly any money at all. I mean, literally, it's kind of back to, remember the lottery? And what the promises were made on that? And it never materialized. And so that's a concern we have, is there's a lot of promises, but when it actually comes to fruition, there's no substance to it, to allow it. And so, and one last comment I'll make, and I won't get into the youth part because I know Leo's very familiar with the legal, the youth aspects of it. In Colorado, they have special facilities for youth, for under 18. 90% of the youth in those facilities are there because of addiction to marijuana, which everybody says is not addictive. The other 10% are there because most of them started on marijuana and progressed to some other drug. And that's the real challenge. Because every time you make something legal, as with alcohol, as with cigarettes, et cetera, there are those, there are those youth, even adults, who would never participate because it's illegal. And yet, when you make it legal, they'll try it or whatever. And so the increases are inevitable. And that's the concern we have. And let Stockton or Stan Soss County or some of those other places adopt it. But I don't think it belongs here in San Joaquin County and certainly not in unincorporated area. So with that, any other questions, I'd be glad to answer.
Questions, anybody?
I don't have any questions for Supervisor Nguyen, but my concern is the resolution itself. Nowhere in there does it say that we oppose Measure B.
Yeah.
Gives all the reasons why you should, but then at the bottom, it simply says we have the responsibility to protect the city, but it doesn't say that we oppose Measure B. And I, if we're going to do this, I think it ought to.
Oh, we, I agree 100%. We wanted to make sure the council was wanting to do that. Of course, we'll bring this back, probably prune it a little bit even, but then bring it back with the full opposition to the measure and have the mayor sign that version. And that's okay.
Well, but the election is November 6th.
And I understand, you're going to give us direction, we'll correct the resolution and the mayor will sign it.
I saw the same thing and I figured there was some legal reason why it wasn't in there, but, okay.
Not that I don't trust anybody, but I just thought.
But I don't trust anybody.
We might want to see if the chief wants to add something to it because I would have to think he probably has more knowledge of it.
No, I would echo the comments made by Supervisor Nguyen. I don't really have anything to add, but I believe everything that he relayed tonight regarding the legalization of marijuana and the impact it will have on our communities is correct.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
So the motion would be to direct staff to revise the draft resolution that was supplied to us and to include full opposition to the measure.
So moved.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Nguyen, and I'll be in Wednesday to sign it.
Who didn't vote?
Who didn't vote? I didn't vote.
I don't know, it says no absence.
Uker. Oh, his computer just died, Dan.
So what is your vote, Dean?
I said yes.
Okay, yeah, so it's a 4-0 vote. Thank you.
He got back in. He's much more. No, he's much more computer literate than I am.
Okay, we're going to, if nobody objects, we're going to move 4C up now, if that's okay with Mr. Tyers. Okay, we're going to move you up now, if that's okay. No, it's just that I think he has sat through enough council meetings. He doesn't want to sit through any more than he has to. So Mayor Restuccia has requested City Council consider approving the American Legion Post Number 190 Military Street Banner Program to honor residents who have served in the United States Air Force and to promote civic pride with the following requirements. American Legion Post 190 to submit the Engineering Department details of the brackets to attach the banners to the polls for review and approval. American Legion Post 190 contract to obtain an encroachment permit from the Engineering Department prior to beginning any work in the public right away. And American Legion Post 190 contract to remove all brackets and banner days from the time the program is no longer being offered to residents and to be funded 100% by Post 190 members or however it's done. So you can explain the rest of it. I'd appreciate it, Mr. Tyers.
Thank you. First of all, with me tonight is one of our members, John Chandar Jr., who is currently active duty, which we're glad to have in the post. And then also Denise Alvarez, one of our other members is here too. So she just came from work. My name's Ernie Ty Hurst, past commander and current adjutant for American Legion Post 190 here in Ripon. No, I am not a World War II veteran. My war was Vietnam. So just to clarify a few things, you know, there are a few that may have thought I was. No, not quite that old. But yes, I'm here representing the Post 190 regarding the Military Street Banner Program. We've had a committee within the post doing research and working on this program for some time. It was brought to the post recently for its support upon approval by the City Council to install the banners on light poles along Fulton. This is primarily the location for those banners. We have a wall, a veterans' wall right now that the post manages. It currently has over 780 names on it. To be eligible for that wall, you needed to be a Ripon resident, a veteran. Some are even still living, like myself. Yes. And it's not a memorial wall. It is a veterans' wall, okay? It's a wall of honor. And when we talked about the number of names that might eventually be part of the banner program, initially, it was 30, you know, and we kind of realized that we already have 780 names, okay, on the veterans' wall. So having names, okay, for the program is not going to be an issue. An issue might be that this is a 25-year program. So the use of Fulton is appropriate, we believe, because it's named after a World War II veteran, one of our killed in action in World War II. And it's in an area with a subdivision containing the names of the other six killed in action veterans from Ripon. And so it's an appropriate area, we believe, to have something like this. I believe the council has been given an example of the banner on a pole. This banner that's shown is a 30-inch by 96-inch banner. The banner we're proposing would be somewhat, just a little bit smaller, 30 by 72-inch. The post has read all the conditions that staff has put on yet and agree to those conditions. We will pay for everything. That is our responsibility. And I, if we have any questions, we have committee members here and that, if you have any questions.
So staff does a pretty good job, then you would say, putting conditions together? You don't have to answer. The answer is yes. Any questions for Mr. Tyers? Thank you for giving me the opportunity to put this on the agenda. I appreciate that. Any questions of Ernie?
I have a couple. I went out there and looked. There's 18 polls. If you have 780 people, it's going to be 43 years before you get done.
As I said, it's going to be a long time, yes. And we're generating veterans, unfortunately, every year.
But only the people who pay the money who go up on the.
Yes, yes.
My other question has probably more to do with staff. My concern or a question that I raised in my own mind is, are we setting any kind of a precedent that if anybody else, any other group, wants to come in and use our light poles to advertise or promote something else, how are we going to say no if we say yes to this? If we want to say no? That's my thing.
Yeah. I think you could take these on an individual basis. I don't think there's anybody that has any sort of vested right to use our infrastructure. And you can identify a good public purpose in a community organization that is, you know, instrumental in this process. I think you could differentiate that from the next person that comes along that maybe doesn't have those same qualifications. Now, as a political matter, it may be hard to, and.
I've already been there in the short time I've been on the council. And that is exactly my concern. And that maybe if this moves forward, we need to develop some sort of policy or something to give the council, for want of a better word, cover in case something else does come up. So that we've talked about it without somebody's name or group name attached to the issue and have some guidance.
It would be tough to do that in a real precisely, but I think what you could do is have sort of a broad general requirement that they have to provide some demonstrable community benefit and be in, you know, a Ripon nonprofit and those types of things. So we could try to put some cap on it.
I just think it's better to talk about it without somebody's name attached to it or without a council person promoting it. And then, I mean, we've been there before with some other things that come up here. And I just think it would be better to talk about it ahead of time than saying, holy smokes, how did we get here?
Yeah, until you know sort of what the program is, what they're proposing to do, we can understand what Ernie and his group were wanting to do here. But the next person might bring a slightly different twist to it. We haven't thought about that at the staff. But we can doodle it. I'm not saying we can't do it.
No, and I'm not saying I want it done tomorrow either, but I just, because the one thing I thought of is what, do we want to get drug into a discussion because there's a family who can't afford the 250 bucks? And now they're told that their person can't be, I don't want to have to be the referee for working that out.
Yeah, good points from a policy standpoint. If I could at least stress what Mr. Zuber is talking about as far as the affordability. I've talked to members in the post about the possibility of a scholarship program, you know, within the post. You're going to have families of veterans, you know, that 250 is probably, you know, on the edge for them, okay? And, you know, I think that that's, it's something that we need to look at seriously, okay? As far as, it's just, it's like anything else, even with the names on the wall, okay? There are provisions, okay, for that, all right? So we've always been sensitive, you know, to those issues. I think what Mr. Zuber is probably alluding to a little bit is the school district has policies regarding advertising and various other things that are allowed, you know, on the campuses, in various venues and that. And there are guidelines, okay, that you follow. There are criteria that you need to follow. And I would hate for the Legion Post to be the threshold because we're 90 years old, okay? There's not a lot of organizations other than maybe the Chamber, you know, that's been here that long in Ripon. So, you know, you certainly wouldn't want to start and say, okay, you have to be at least 90 years old or 100 years old in the organization, you know, wise. But I think, case by case basis, if you establish guidelines.
But I don't necessarily disagree with the guidelines. And first of all, you say I'm not promoting it. I thought it would be an opportunity for all the council members to be able to look at and make a decision, but I'm for it. But I think guidelines are good. And I think what Vice Mayor Zuber is bringing up is a very good point. Because, you know, we talk about this council meeting, a lot about, we do certain things. You get a completely different council that's just a bunch of wingnuts. They can do anything they want. To change the guidelines would be harder than just to go out and do something that maybe otherwise would be dumb. So I don't disagree that some kind of guidelines probably makes some sense. I don't know what they are. I don't know.
Certainly, we'd be glad to be the model, but, you know, I mean, that's, I'm not sure that a lot of people would necessarily be able to comply. VFW, you know, Lions Club, you know, various organizations like that.
Well, I'd just like to think about it. And if we can come up with something, we can. I'm not necessarily throwing up a roadblock to this proposal, but the classic example I used to use is, okay, we said yes to them. Now, what if the Ku Klux Klan walks in here and wants to put something up?
You say no.
Well, you better have a reason because the way things are, you, you know, it, I'm just saying, it's better to be proactive rather than reactive when you get to things like that.
Right. I agree.
I think the Legion proposal is probably a good beginning to, you know, to say, okay, here's an example.
Well, it sparks the conversation that Vice Mayor is bringing up because if somebody came up with something we didn't like, how would we turn it down?
And, you know, again, there are ways to do it.
But Tom gets the big bucks.
Do we need, do we need action on this?
We need a motion to approve. We need a motion to approve.
I'll make a motion to approve it.
You have a second?
Sure. Let me remember how. And his wasn't World War II either.
Four oh vote. Thank you for the presentation. Appreciate it.
You're welcome.
Good luck. So when, question now that's over, when do you plan on this starting?
Again, we, the committee is, is still working on getting the contractor and, and we still have work to do.
What if the polls are taken before you get yours up? Since we don't have guidelines.
Remember, we're veterans.
Thank you, Ernie. Thanks, John. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay, now we're going to go back to resolution adopt, this is a two B. This resolution adopts policies and procedures for implementing the city of Ripon's BMR plus affordable housing program.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, fellow council members. This is about a year or so ago, we, we amended the affordable housing program, as you recall, to include provisions in there for a new type of affordable housing that meets the FHA requirements. In that, in that ordinance, we did talk about adopting policies and guidelines and procedures for implementing that program. So this is, what's in front of you this evening is the resolution adopting those implementation policies and procedures. I'd be happy to answer any questions if you have any regarding that.
How do I get this word supposed to go?
Well, it down.
Well, I mean, am I supposed to hit something over here, though?
Where do you want to go?
Oh, it's there, I guess. I have a question before we, so just auditing banks and seeing what they do, I, I have no problem with, Leo may have some, some questions about parts of it, which are probably very, very good questions. The question I have, though, is a six sixty is a pretty bad credit score. Is that kind of a standard industry acceptance?
That, we actually pulled in some of the realtors here in town, qualified lenders, and that was one of their suggestions. And that was a little bit higher than I think some of the others wanted to start with, so that's exactly where we kind of landed on that.
Really? Because that's not good at all. Banks, that would be considered terrible. Just letting you know.
Well, I mean, this is something that obviously is in front of you this evening. If, if the council's got desire to...
Well, you don't want to make the program to where nobody qualifies either. Exactly. But I just wanted to bring it up and give you my comments.
Well, it qualifies, but it's got to be real. Well, we can adjust it if it becomes problematic.
Yeah.
One question I had is, this process talks about how we're going to go about qualifying people and get them in the houses. What happens if we have a house that's available, nobody qualifies?
At this point, the developer would have to keep marketing it until it's sold.
So it doesn't convert to open market? It stays as a BMR house until we find somebody?
That's not...
Okay. That's what I was hoping I would hear.
So can they go out, and that's a good question, because primarily, they have to live here, they got to work here, there's kind of some area they can live in. What if nobody ever qualifies? They got to keep marketing to those areas. They can't go reach out to somebody willing to move here?
Those, so the preference is given to those people meeting those criteria. If people are moving in from the area outside of that, they, they will fall into like a second pool. So if you have nobody in that first pool, or, or say there's four houses for sale and only two in that first pool, then you go down to that second pool, and it could be anybody. It opens up to anybody at that point.
The work requirement, as I read it, it was you either live here or work here. So there could be somebody who lives in Series, who has a job in Ripon, who could apply, qualify, and then move to Ripon.
Correct.
Okay, that's, I just wanted to make sure that that was right.
So do we require the builder to have some, so many rejections? In other words, let's say, for an example, that they have a friend someplace that lives somewhere else that wants to move in, how many declines do they have for people to live and work here before they can go out to the tertiary market to market it to somebody outside?
Well, we're seeing the first round of these getting put together right now. The vineyards subdivisions building the first four of these units. Right now, they are, they have about five, I think, applicants that have applied and qualified, so they have to go through a qualified lender here in town. They have to get what they call automated something approval. So it's basically, in the past, you just have to get primary approval at a lender, and then when you go to buy the house, sometimes it would fall out. So just to get to that point, they're already qualified buyer at that point. The idea is to get a pool of, you know, four-plus buyers that would be up for four houses and be able to pull from that.
So do we see the declines as well? Do we see, does somebody see the declines and know that they actually went through the process?
So that's the automated approval going through the lender. They can't even get on the list for qualification.
Do you see the declines as well?
I don't.
Okay.
Ready? I'll move to approve.
Okay. Thank you. Motion passes four oh. Now we move on to two C. The resolution adopts the health and welfare benefits to provide in the 2019, including the four items here. Mr. Warner, is that you?
Yes, I'll take this one. Dan, do you mind pulling up the presentation, please? So this is the time of year when we go through the renewal process for all the health and welfare benefits that are provided to the city employees. But I, overall, for the year, it was a very positive year compared to what we've seen in the years past. What I did on the, was included in your, in your packet, I compared the 2018 premium, premiums compared to the 2019. You can see what the changes are between the two years. So for the healthcare, the Kaiser healthcare, it went up about one percent. For the Blue Shield, it went up three percent. Premier Dental envisioned we were in a two-year rate guarantee. Chiropractic actually went down slightly, and then life insurance, long-term disability, both had increases. Life insurance is a very large increase from a percent standpoint, not from a dollar standpoint. So overall, for the city, the increase was about one point nine percent. The total amount that we're paying for all these benefits is just over, or just under one point five million dollars, one point four seven five million dollars. I'm not going to get into too much detail with all of this, but we do have MOUs with all of our employees that states over a certain max that was defined back in 2014. We're going to share in those premium increases. So this slide just summarizes what is the responsibility of the city versus the employee. So for the Kaiser employees, the max is set at one thousand seven hundred and sixty dollars a month, and for Blue Shield, it is set at one thousand four hundred and fifteen dollars a month. So you can see what the premiums are for the different employee classifications. Again, these are dollar premiums cost per month. The upper half of the slide is for the Blue Shield employees, and includes employee-only, employee-plus spouse, employee-plus children, and employee along with a family. And then below that is the Kaiser, same employee categories. The only categories that are currently exceeding the defined maximums in both Blue Shield and the Kaiser plans is the employees plus family. So those employees within Blue Shield, they are paying one hundred and seventy-five dollars a month. In 2018, they paid a hundred and fifty-two dollars a month, so that would be their responsibility in 2019. For the Kaiser employees within the employee-plus-family category, they will be paying a hundred and twenty-three dollars a month, and in 2018, they're paying twenty, or, I'm sorry, a hundred and fourteen dollars a month.
Question. I never noticed this before. Am I reading this wrong? So if you take the Blue Shield program and employee, the, I mean, there's a huge discrepancy in this amount of monies. That doesn't seem right to me. Am I reading it wrong?
What, what monies are you talking about? Employee responsibility or the total premium?
Right.
Boy plus family, he's looking at the fifteen ninety city responsibility, the first and the eighteen eighty.
Looks like it's the other way around.
Keep, keep in mind on the Blue Shield employees, this does not include the deductible reimbursement. So with the Blue Shield plan...
So that answers my question. I mean, because to me, it looks like there's an advantage to certain employees if you're...
Right, okay. All right.
It's cheaper to be on Blue Shield.
Right, yeah. And this goes back a few years now, but the Blue Shield plan, it used to be on the old plan that had very little deductible reimbursement. The increases in that plan were, were happening at such a high rate that we could choose to go to a silver plan with a higher deductible, but that deductible is reimbursed to the employee. So that, that is not included on this stuff.
I, I, I knew there had to be a reason for that.
So this is a summary of where we're at with 2019, again, from, I think a renewal process has probably been one of the easiest years I've been involved in this. What you see here is just a summary of where we're at. Staff is recommending we continue with the healthcare plans that we're currently providing to the employees and continue to move forward with the MOU language relating to the splitting of the healthcare premiums as, as, as shown in those MOUs. With that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
I'm going to make a comment I make every time. I wasn't on the council the time that the council made the decision, but you guys did a great job, whoever was on the council, because you saved one hundred and eighty-three thousand dollars annually the way you restructured the Blue Shield program. So whoever was on, kudos to you all. I say that every time, but I, I say it again because you saved quite a bit of money.
You know, this has really been a team effort, and Bohanans is not here tonight, but they've been involved in this. Obviously, the council has a, the council has a real interest in providing the, the benefit to the employee, and obviously, you know, staff looks into all these issues, too. So it really has been a team effort, but the one thing I would say is I know during the times of the Affordable Care Act and that being rolled out, there was a lot of questions of what should we do? Should we go to different plans or some savings here? It really stayed the course, and I think it's really served us well. Some of the plans that are being offered now to the employee, we're grandfathered in, and you can't even get those plans anymore, so. And then we're seeing very favorable rate increases year to year.
I didn't mean to take away from Bohanans and the staff and you guys proposing it, but the council made the final vote to do it, and they could have voted no. I mean, the council's going to take criticism for voting wrong. You ought to give it credit for voting right. Which you guys did, I did not. Okay, thank you, Dean Lio.
Thanks, Dean. I wasn't either before I got here.
Okay, thank you all, Kev, past council members. It was a smart thing to do. Okay.
Do you need action for that? Hold a second.
Okay, Adam passes four zero. Okay, now we're going to go to public hearing. I want to make sure I didn't miss anything. Council will take action on following items at the conclusion of each public hearing. A 2019 health and welfare plan for the city, as required by City Municipal Code, prior to city council approving the increase in the cost of providing health benefits to city council members. City council may consider whether to accept said increase at a public meeting. So you've heard the staff report. I will open it up now for public hearing, discussion. If anybody in the audience has anything to add, address, comments that they would like to present. Seeing nobody, I will close the public hearing and turn this over to the council.
I just want to verify that the health benefits that are provided for city council are, how should I put it, priced the same way they are for the employee. In other words, if there's a council person with a family taking whatever, either one, there's out-of-pocket expense for that. But if it's a council member who is taking benefits only for him or herself, there's no cost. Okay. All right, thank you.
So recommended action, approve the resolution, adopt the increase. Do you have a motion?
I'll move.
Motion. Do you have a second? Okay, motion passes. Unmet transit needs, Salma King Council of Governments, is the public hearing to consider unmet transit needs within the city of Ripon. Who's going to do that? And then I'll open the public hearing after we get staff report.
I believe there's long for the cog here.
Oh, okay, good. So you are staff reporter.
They actually told me that I wasn't going to speak, so here I am.
Well, when everybody looked at each other, that was the clue.
Yeah. So my name's Michelle Locken-Dagie. I'm an assistant regional planner with San Martin Council of Governments, and right now I'm in charge of the public outreach portion for the met transit needs. And basically, we're asking the public if there are any needs, bus, rail out there that you want to address at this time. If you cannot address this at this time, we also have surveys on our website, sjcog.org. You can go to programs, unmet transit needs, and then there's a survey portal. So I'm just here to listen to any public comments.
Great, thank you. Want, want you to help there in case somebody has any questions. So let me open it up for the public comment. If you've got any comments, but to add, as she's indicated. Seeing nobody, I will now close the public comment. Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Do we need to, no action? Okay.
Make sure they know that we made you speak.
A long time. And let them know you waited an hour to do it, too. Sorry about that. Okay, well, thank you.
Thank you.
Good job. Couldn't have done it without you. Okay. Now, the next public hearing, Salma King County Multi-Species Habitat Conservation and Open Space Plan 2019 fee updated. This is a public hearing to consider development fee increase in Salma King County Multi-Species Habitat Conservation Open Space Plan for all new development pursuant to the SJMSCP within the city of Ripon. Okay, does anybody bring that? Oh!
I'll take that one.
Yeah, good.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, fellow council members. It's that time of year, we go through this every year around this time. Actually, their habitat plan for the Salma King County, they look at the fees once a year. And actually, this year is an anomaly. It's happened one other time since I've been here. It's actually going down.
A lot.
A lot. They have a, they have a formula base that they look at. I did, I did talk with SJ cog staff about it, just to, just to get, pick their brain. I didn't think anybody would have an issue with it going down, but basically, they're saying the land acquisition cost has dropped from, they take it from the 2016 to 2018 timeframe, and they've seen it drop, so that's why you're seeing that significant drop in price for the 2019 year. It's going from, for our area, about ninety-seven hundred dollars an acre to sixty-seven hundred dollars an acre. So there's a staff report that details out all the other habitat types also, and I'd be happy to answer any questions. And this also is a, it's a public hearing, and then there's an adoption of a resolution after that.
So I'll make one comment. This is good and bad. The good is it goes down thirty point nine percent. The bad is, is because commodity prices are practically paint. The value of the underlying land is going down. That's not a good thing for the economic cycle of act. It's a double-edged sword. Okay, any, let me open the public hearing up here to the council. So let me open up the public hearing if anybody has any comments about the reduction in the fees. Okay, seeing nobody, I will close the public hearing and turn it over to the council for comments, concerns, observations.
The only thing I would point out, in that, that chart, I was just looking at it, because I didn't remember seeing it when I read it before. No. They had a chart at the cog meeting when we talked about this, and this program started back in like 2007 or 2008. The fees for next year are within three hundred dollars of the fees that were in place in 2007. That's what's happened. It went up, and then all of a sudden, boom, it just dropped right back to where it was before. So if you're going to develop, as far as the habitat fees, this is the year to do Do we have to adopt this?
Yes.
Do you adopt the resolution?
Adopt the resolution, amend the Salma King County...
Hold a second.
Okay, motion passes four oh. We now move on to four A, fiscal year 2017-20, general fund surplus.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So this is the time of year that we close the books, the books in the general fund, actually all the city accounts, including the general fund. So this is the time of year that we close the books, the books in the general fund, actually, all the city accounts, including the general fund. And also, when I bring forward to council what those surpluses were in the general fund, I had a discussion about how to move forward. From 2017-18, we had a one point three million dollar surplus. I do have a table here that shows where we ended up with revenue as compared to the expenses and how it's compared to 2016-17. So overall, from the previous year, we had a drop of revenue of about one percent. You can see that that really is a result of development-related revenue and one-time revenue sources. As far as recurring revenue, which that's our sales tax, property tax, franchise fees, rent leases, the stuff we, we have on a normal basis, that's actually went up three point nine percent, so that's good. As far as expenses go, they went up three point two percent. So that's just a summary of the general fund and some of the major categories we have there. This figure, I know it's hard for you on the screen, I apologize.
No, it's clear.
I'm sorry, young guys.
It is in your packet. There's a table in there that is much clearer to read in. But what I, what I did, we met with the city council and staff back in March to talk about city goals and the policies and implementation of those. This table is somewhat a result of that discussion. We talked a lot about reserve funds. We talked a lot about capital projects and some of the council's priorities in those projects. So what I did in this table, the top third of it is the current reserve funds that we have set up. So many of these are new funds that we went through as part of this most recent budget cycle. And I've included those along with the balancing of each of those funds and where I'm recommending portions of the surplus to be transferred to. The middle third of that table includes capital replacement items. Every year, as we go through the, this process of discussion of surpluses, I ask all the department heads what they have and things that they would like to see replaced. So that's what you see on here. I might go through each of these items in detail, but that, that total added up to about two hundred and forty-three thousand dollars. And then below that, I do list all of the city council priority capital projects that resulted from our, our March meeting. So, so what I'm recommending as far as the surplus, four hundred and, just under four hundred and thirty-three thousand dollars be transferred to the street and road reserve fund. That is thirty-three percent of the surplus in line with our current policy. That would bring that, that balance up to just over one point nine million dollars in that fund category.
In the street and road fund?
In the street and road reserve fund. It's the reserve fund, yes.
How much money is that spent for it? That plus a couple of minutes?
No, that, that's still available for, to, to go to a project of our council's choosing.
That's including the finishing out Stockton? That money's already spent?
That's a different, that's a different account. So this, this account was set up with the idea, we had the street and road. But where we've been, how we've been operating is we have a street and road operating plant, and that's what we're using to maintain street roads in Ripon and preventing them from failure. I think some of the challenges we would always add is how do you deal with the roads that have already failed? And to help solve that problem, the city council had a policy created that takes thirty-three percent of the reserves implicit in this account. And the idea was this would start going to replacing some of the worst roads in Ripon that have already failed. I'm also recommending that six hundred and thirty-six thousand dollars go to the general capital department reserve. This money is just a reserve in place to replace future police cars, computers, whatever comes up over the years that they need to be replaced. Obviously, I talked about the two hundred and forty-three thousand dollars of that reserve that would go to, to capital replacement. So with those three items, that would be the allocation of the, of the reserve.
Does the one point four million of general fund capital department, does it go to the same sorts of expenditures that you're proposing under capital replacement? Is that what that fund is intended to be used for?
What we normally do is that fund would go to the, the normal cycle replacement. So like police cars, we do two a year. Computers, we do so many computers a year. So that, that fund finds those normal items. The, the ones below here, these are stuff that are, I would say more of a wish list, that they looked at and said, you know, it'd be nice to do these items in addition to our normal, normal schedule.
So when we developed a budget for nineteen twenty, when you put in there, put two police cars, a new truck, blah, 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 you're intending to take it out of this fund or out of the general fund?
It comes out of that one point four million dollars.
Okay.
So when you call it department reserve, that's all the departments? Do you have a breakdown of all of the departments where that goes, or just, it's just one fund?
On the in-car computers, greater than five years old, why is it different? You got estimated costs of twenty-six thousand, and you go over and write for the surplus transfer, it's, it's thirty-six thousand. Is there a reason for that, or the rest of them balance out?
That's a mistake.
That's a good question.
The thirty-six thousand dollars isn't twenty-six thousand dollars.
Geez, I'm, I actually caught you.
So does that mean it's two thirty-three then, too? So does that mean you have ten thousand dollars left?
Hey, let's, hey, let's.
You're a mathematical genius. That won't suit the public too, what the heck.
So if there's no more questions about the reserve, I, I do wanna spend a few minutes talking about some of the, the city council's priority projects. So there, there's three of them I wanted to just point out and, and start at least having a discussion of how to move some of these projects forward. The, the first one is the community center parking lot. Obviously, that parking lot isn't very force-laid. There are a number of locations in there that are trip hazards. It also is very difficult from a circulation standpoint. If you go into one of the parking lots and there's no spaces left, you have to kind of maneuver around and come back around to the other parking lot.
Now, you can go through the, right, you can go through.
That, is that job, is it two million dollar job?
So there's a couple of different, there's a couple of different things we look at, and I apologize, the figure on here is not the best figure. But we look at adding additional parking out there. So this section that is up here in this corner is where the baseball field is currently at. So we would extend the park, the two parking lots, add about thirty-one more spaces, and then relocate the middle baseball field further to the west. So that was one option that we looked at to improve circulation, and we just added thirty more spots. The other thing that the staff had talked about is the idea of putting pavers in this parking lot versus asphalt. So we put a table together of what the cost differences are in doing that. So if we were just gonna replace the first parking lot as is and do it with asphalt, it would be approximately a six hundred and fifty thousand dollar project. Please keep in mind, we haven't done the design yet for this. We're just, we're real planning level builders. If we were to expand the parking lot, as I showed in that previous figure, again, with asphalt and relocating that baseball field, we believe it's just over a one million dollar project. If we were gonna use pavers and, and leave the parking lot in its current configuration, the price of that is just over one point one million dollars. And again, if we were going to expand it with pavers, it would be just over one point five million dollar project. I know we've talked about this before. Pavers always have a higher initial capital cost. The reason we do these in neighborhoods is because it requires very little maintenance, and as we talk about the street roads all the time, it's that additional maintenance over time and funding that maintenance that does become difficult for the city. So asphalt, obviously, lower initial cost, but it does require silly slugs and overlays over the years. We ran the numbers, and we believe that the lifecycle cost of pavers and asphalt is the same over a forty-year period. Prior to the recession, the city council, this goes back, but it's for a number of years before the recession happened, where the city council had transferred general fund money to a parks and recreation, general capital fund. My understanding of this, this was always the intent to use this money for replacement or maintenance of park facilities. So I just wanted to point that out to the council. There is a desire to move over this project. That's an option to look at for the funding. The balance in that fund right now is about two point five eight million dollars.
Let's go for it.
The other, the other project I wanted to talk about is the corporation yard. Currently, Public Works Department is operating out of the facility near Dog Boulevard and Vera Avenue. This is a very old facility, and it really, they may do with it, but it really lacks a space and a layout to be really useful for their operations. We've looked at a couple of different options. One of them is really making pretty significant improvements to that building to make it a little bit better for them. Or the other one is to, we're in the process of, looking at moving them over to the, the location of the new corporation yard. So some years back, the city purchased proximity next to the fueling station, between the fueling station and the animal shelter on Dog Boulevard.
And the dog park?
And the dog park. Yes. One of the things with this, though, is difficult is really the phasing of it and how much this is really gonna cost. Because right now, in our PFFP corporation yard, the capital balance in there is about five hundred and sixty-six thousand dollars. Obviously, the corporation yard is much larger than this, and that. What I'm proposing to the council is we begin to, to, or at least hire an architect to lay that out. What is the overall facility look like? And possible phasing of that, and what is the, and how much for at least an initial phase? To at least get a headquarters of a public works facility, and again, having that discussion. So PFFP fee was set up in two thousand and six, I believe. Obviously, we had a certain population, thirteen thousand folks, residents at, at that time. I think there's some options of how we would fund this, but it really comes down to how much is that first phase. So what I was recommending to the council, at least getting an architect on board and start that process. I did receive a scope and fees from LDA Architects, at, at least to get some early information from them that we can bring back to the city council. They have provided a cost not to exceed fifteen thousand dollars.
What would we do with the existing place that we've got now? Is that a feasibility that we could sell that property off to help build this new place? Or do, or need all that land?
I don't wanna speak for, for Tim. I believe the plan is that eventually that would be used for the parks and recreation.
Yes, that's, that's what we were, we were thinking. We would definitely use it. It depends on the phasing and how, how much, how much is built with the expansion of the new corporation yard at one time. But eventually, eventually down the road, we'll continue to make all that space.
That land, is it really, I mean, it could be turned into housing, potentially, probably not. Is that all flood area? And live by crossroads now? It's just a thought.
My question, my question is, is the PFFP or the corporation yard, is that the five hundred thousand that you, figure you gave? Okay. My only comment, I think, I don't have a problem proceeding with starting, develop plans and stuff. As we start to move, we need to clean up what we got already. I mean, there's a lot of stuff out there. It doesn't look good. We need to start, we need to start fixing it up a little bit.
Go on, did safety have it?
Let's call that show.
The last project that we, the lines of research we talked about is a little bit earlier, but some years ago, when the council set up the street and road reserve fund, the idea was for that money to go back and fix some of our worst roads. I think obviously, the, the council pointed out they were getting close to two million dollars in that fund. Probably an appropriate time to start talking about projects and how the council would like to use that money. I know as part of the priority projects that came out of our workshop in March, we're talking about reconstructing maybe some of the downtown streets at some point. That includes locusts and some of the shit with the real, real big crowds. We, we were talking, we were in our staff meetings, with the department heads, and I think there was a lot of good discussion, a lot of good stuff that we had in that. I, I think what came out of that discussion was this makes sure that it's very walkability, circulation stance, we've thought about everything. Maybe there's opportunities for some one-way streets in there that one-way's passing, maybe some bike routes. Before we just start fixing the crowd, I think we take a look at this area in different ways we can really improve circulation. So, so with that, our thought is to hire a consultant to come in and prepare a, a circulation and walkability plan that staff could use as they start advancing some of their projects. So we have not reached out to the consultant yet, but if the consultant agrees, we would reach out to a consultant as his scope of work is needed to bring that back.
I would like to, I would like, I think it's a good idea, but I'd like to also look at the more side of Main Street and the alleys. I mean, they're ridiculous, and I think, I think if we're going to look at doing things, to improve the movement around downtown, I think they need to put the whole package together, not look at one side, not look at the other.
Draw a map and hopefully, and hire, I mean, we may not wanna do it, we may not wanna do it. Alleyways are, is that city property or is that private property? They are, the one thing, like I got it yesterday with the old man at high school, dropping his daughter off, I came down the alleyway.
You have to go real slow? It's like a Porsche.
The area that we were, the area that, at least from a staff perspective, that we were throwing out, where we would start this type of study, uh, north of Main Street, or between Main Street and Stockton, I'm sorry, between Main Street and Second Street. And then between Stockton and Locust. So we, we would look at all those streets, all the alleys, all those side alleys. I know it's essentially the same area that this study.
And the alleys. I want, I want more of Main Street, the alleys, and the alley, and the alleys included in that, and the, and the streets that get to them.
Maybe it's Wilmer to Second, it's Wilmer to Second.
Frontage Road's fine, it's, it's.
It's between them.
Between the frontage road and Main Street.
So the frontage road north, south to Second, Second Street to Wilmer, or not Wilmer, the, um, the, um, A Street.
Oh, 'cause really, if we could get all that, if we could get all that fixed up someday, it makes downtown, it makes downtown different.
And I think, and I think if we had an overall plan, I mean, obviously, it's taking many years to get through that. If you had an overall plan, this is phasing where the priority areas are at, we have to start allocating our money in projects to start moving forward. At least that's what, at least that's what we would hope to get out there.
Well, we don't have a plan now. We don't have a plan now.
That's all.
Do you need a motion? Do you need a motion, all this?
Just, I have a couple of comments, just on the, on the community center. I think the community idea, the pavers and more pavers. And that thing's the same size, I wasn't the sound, five thousand people. We have the same amount of parking, and that applies more parking. The second thing would be on the, the professional services, corporate yard. I mean, I think that's absolutely necessary. The circulation. I wasn't on the council, I have been the last four years. You know, I like, and I like, take a look, and I, you can all look at city, you can all look at city, financial statements. I look at corporate financial statements all the time. I think all of you, core staff, the core staff. I think all of you, core staff, the core staff councils, and this one too, I think there's been a really good job of setting the jobs aside, setting up, setting up issues. We're gonna have a downturn, we're gonna have some issues just like every other city. There's gonna be some cities hitting very, very hard, based on what I see, I think that we may have a few pickups now and again. Okay.
I'll move to approve the proposal, with the change about the downtown.
Whenever you're ready, Dean, okay. Okay, okay. For the grand jury report, Greg staff report, this staff report, and this staff city council meeting to the grand jury, we already looked at this.
Yes, as part of the response to the grand jury, we said we would take a look at using volunteers, code enforcement. The staff report addresses that we worked through, our code enforcement activities over the past five years, we've been sort of consistent with the number of code enforcement officers. We do have a, actually since, since the recession, we've actually had even more staff added on to code enforcement by having a part-time code enforcement officer come from the police department. So at this point, we're not seeing a huge need to incorporate the use of volunteers to do it. But we, we look at this on a yearly basis, if at some point the workload gets big enough to where we think we need a full time, or the use of volunteers, we would bring it back to the city council to address at that time. So it's kind of what the, the staff report details out, in case we anticipate forwarding to the grand jury, the grand, in response to that, unless you have any questions.
Questions, comments? Okay, so just action, just actions, okay, from the council, okay, from the council.
You need a vote, you need a vote.
Oh, it said discuss, oh, it said discuss.
I'll move to forward the report to the grand jury.
Did say action, already there's no action. Okay.
You can check with Mr. Uker when he gets back.
He'll be back, he didn't leave, he didn't leave. No, we've got enough to pass. No, we've got enough, okay, okay.
Maybe he did leave.
He got mad, he got mad. Okay, well, we'll give him an opportunity to, uh, okay with me. So we, so Dean also, so Dean also approves sending the, sending, thank you, Dean, thank you, Dean. Okay, D, accept credit cards for over the counter payments. Take him at least on.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. At our August meeting, a class member requested the staff evaluate expanding our credit card services to include the police department. So when analyzing the expansion of the service, we found that it would be convenient to allow them to over the counter, both over the counter and city halls, since currently we only take payments over the internet. So we reached out to our current provider of credit card services for utility bills, BDS is their name, billing document specialist. And they would provide the service requested for us to take over the counter payments. The city would remain in compliance with, it's called PCI compliance, payment card industry data security standard. Through using the services that they're, they're offering. And then the other thing that we would think we need to do is to, as a city, remain, revenue neutral is what it's called. What this means is that the convenience fee is passed on to the customer. So that is what we are looking to do, if we would go forward with the customer service agreement with BDS for you today. There would be a nine hundred dollar one-time cost, which would be a three hundred dollar setup cost, and then three hundred dollars purchase machines. Each one at the, one at the city hall, one at the police department. And then it's twenty-five dollars and then twenty-five dollars thereafter, which would be three hundred dollars a year. And this would be paid by the enterprise funds, as we anticipate, but most of the use would be for utility bills. If I totally want to monitor what the use of the over the counter units would be, and just the cost allocation accordingly in the future. For the whole thing.
So now they're writing checks, they're writing cash account, they're writing cash account, they're keeping the cash locked up, keep the cash locked up.
I'm sorry?
Right?
Yes, 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 right now it's either cash or check.
We like the only shoe, we like the only shoes. Really? Really? What, water for an S one, don't even ask for a N one?
No.
That water probably, that water probably.
So if, if the charge is ten dollars, the individual pays twelve, they get ten dollars.
I gotta cowl, I gotta cowl. You can't double charge it, you can't double, what you hope is, the time where you hope is, you have the cash and doing all that, cash and doing all that pay score.
We'll still accept cash.
You mentioned that, you mentioned that enterprise funds, hey, the ones that pay monthly fees, monthly fees. Don't they also use, they also use these cards to pay rec fees? Rec fees?
Currently, we have two providers, one is for recreation, that's for vantage, that's, we just talked about them a couple of weeks ago. And then BDS is for utilities, so the fees that we've paid to vantage are paid out of recreation. But the BDS, but the BDS fees that we pay, maintenance and, their monthly invoice is paid out of, um, the price fund, because it's only for utilities.
So now I'm, now I had confused, so I'm gonna ask, so I'm gonna ask you to straighten me out. You to straighten me out. At this point, at this point, people can use their credit cards, their credit card, over the counter, to register their kid to play soccer. Or they have to do all that online. So if they roll in here, and they roll in here, it's for their kid for soccer, sorry, they gotta go to the machine, they gotta place the machine somewhere to do it. But if a person rolls in here, wants to pay their, wants to pay their water bill, water bill, they can either, if we approve this tonight, they'll be able to do it over the counter, or online.
Um, we would propose that they could also pay the recreation fees, that they would have to use, that they would have this provider, not through, not through the vantage, the vantage.
So if everybody starts using over the counter to rent for their kids for soccer, is it possible, we look at those rec fees, the great part of that?
That's the analysis that we'll do now, because we will get a breakdown, we'll get a breakdown, what is being paid. We'll be able to see if there's a number of transactions, how many of those are police department transactions, how many of those are business licenses, how many of those are recreation, how many of those are utilities. We're anticipating that the majority of them are for the minimalities, twenty-five dollar maintenance fee, I don't want to allocate it.
No, I, I understand, I, I'm just trying to get, I'm just trying to get in my head, in my head, which services are operating there.
Well, a lot of people, they want to CC the W, you see the credit card, the register for animals, or the animals.
And we'll see what the usage is.
The one that we approved last time, the interest rate, the charge rate, the six, five percent.
That's, um, that's the vantage, that's our credit card, that's our fee, that's for the recreation fees.
It's nice to get in the twenty-first century. I mean, I like. Uh, yes, discussion and action, discussion and action. Okay, passes, day four, oh, four, oh. Okay, that's the end of day, that's the end of day. agenda, we will go to the projects. Gene, what do you got?
Mr. Mayor, Honorable City Councilman, honorable public councilman, I just have one quick update. As most of you know, we are still battling, we are still battling issues in our community. At the end of September, we had a special operation that targeted, some of the most, some of the most hazardous violations in our city. There were three days that were specifically targeted, and they were four-hour operations, each day with multiple officers. For this, for this twelve hours, twelve hours operations, they issued seventy-two citations. Approximately a hundred traffic stops, a hundred traffic stops. Just a quick break.
How many hours? How many hours?
Twelve.
Twelve.
And multiple officers on, and multiple officers on. Usually, each day there were the, each day there were.
Twelve hours, seventeen-two citations.
How come, how come the other, how come the other, okay, how come the other?
Officer discretion, officer discretion. Just a quick breakdown, there were twenty-three of the citations, twenty-four stop signs, eleven for cell, cell phone usage, six for seatbelt, three for red light, some violations, equipment violations. And then others for driving, some for license, and then a couple of them resulted in some criminal arrests. And those, most of those, most of those site, traffic site stops were located at, located at Jacktown area, second Stockton, Main Street, and also Wilma and second. There were a few over that were targeted on West Colony, in between Jacktown and, in between Jacktown and Hall. Those were the areas that were, those three days during those three days.
You should have blamed it on the council. I, I didn't, I didn't, my mind stopped, my mind, but, but that's off the record, that's off the record, though, of course. Thanks, Chief, thanks, Chief.
I have one question, I have one, I'm gonna ask, I'm gonna ask. I cannot believe, I cannot believe some of the stuff that I see, drivers doing in this town. It's like stop signs don't, it's like speed limits, it's like speed limits, it's nuts, it's nuts. The other thing I've never seen, blacked out, blacked out windows. There have been several times, I, I know you come to an intersection and you sit there waiting, you're trying to decide who's gonna do what. And you can't see, you can't see, I know whether they're looking at you, whether they're looking at you. And I thought, and I thought, the first, the ones on the, drivers on the, drivers in the front seat, aren't they supposed to see, aren't they supposed to see into the vehicle?
Yes and no. You, you, just like, just like any other, just like any other. The, the front, the, in front, driver in passenger, side windows, can be tinted, up to the driver. So there is a portion of, there is a window, a back portion of window, can be tinted.
But if it goes all the way out to the front.
Anything from the driver, anything from passenger or front passenger is only allowed to have factory tinted. Anything over factory tinted is illegal.
Cause it's, cause it's, 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 you know, it, it, you know, bothers you when you get up there, you're trying to figure out, trying to figure out who's doing what. And you can't see inside the other cars. Now all of a sudden, now all of a sudden, now what do I do? Now what do I do? Do they see me or not?
We, we currently have two motor officers, who were in the process of, were third-party qualified, so the bikes will be out, the bikes will be out. It's much easier for them to address violation, especially in downtown area, than a market, they have trouble maneuvering, they have trouble maneuvering.
I just, I just, cause I, I see one, I actually see one, actually see one, a resident, a resident is upset because these are so aggressive. They're so aggressive in forcing traffic, and I, I people that I meet with, I told them to be aggressive. If you've got a problem, come on down, problem, come on down.
Or don't break the law.
Yeah, or don't, yeah, yeah.
So you said from the drive, you said, if somebody drives, leave them forward, drive them forward to back, get their glass, get their glass.
Driver's seat, driver's seat.
So move your seat out, so we get pulled over, move your seat out.
What I'm talking about, what I'm talking about, head out to the window, head out to the engine.
All of a sudden, all of a sudden. All right, okay, Ted, all right, okay, Ted.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I just want to report on water usage for September, we had a decrease from two thousand thirteen to sixteen percent. Round down gradually, gradually, last month, five, sixteen point five, this was sixteen, this was sixteen. Also, when I reported on last Wednesday's, we had the rain event, we never experienced any, we had, we had six, actually, six, seven, actually, seven. Administrator was out, manual covers on, manual covers on, probably twenty, manual covers, just because of the sheer amount, because of the sheer amount of rain. And then we got over it real short, we got over it real short. It was a, over a five-hundred-year event. We had one point six inches, thirty inches, at times, it just inundated, it just inundated. We had several areas that were flooded, storm drain systems, map wells, just get down the water through the pipes. We, we had a crew out, blocking streets, doing everything we could, doing everything we could, just without a rain, just without a rain. To do anything about it, to do anything about it. That's all, Ted, that's all.
Thanks, Ted, in your report, in your report, Ted.
I have a couple of, I have items for you, so on the diamond, so on the diamond, we have been working with, we have been working with the city consultant for the environmental, on the, they are moving forward. They are moving the odor control system and the air system, and they're about two months away, they're about two months away from functioning. And they will be working through the environmental process, because they do have a fourth line, have a fourth line, come back, come back to the council to adopt, and approve that.
Environmental for that, for that fourth line.
Potential approval date is, is stated for June or July for next year. Hopefully, the, hopefully, the odor control system gets up here next month, so we can make sure, so we can make it function the way they intended, and the way they intended. In the months that we tip in the months that we get the most odors in town, which is for now till February, so things are moving forward, things are moving forward. Also, we do not have, we do not have, we do not have, we do not have a couple of items, we are meeting, we are giving a, we are giving a application today, or yesterday, Application today, or yesterday, for, for fast food, for, for, that's combined, by Jacktown interchange, Jacktown interchange.
Kentucky Fried Chicken.
Kentucky Fried Chicken. He can't say, he can't say.
Fast food, huh, fast food, huh? I understand a criminal, I understand a criminal, a canine, a canine's fast food, isn't it, right? James, James.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, yes, Mr. Mayor, one is, one is, the city received three point nine million dollars, Molton Motor Station, in federal transit administration. Or we are approved, or we are approved for this, or to receive that money, to receive that money. And then the other thing is just the project updates, printed out on the sheet, in front of you. The only real change, the only real change on our river road, phase one project, the project is now out bid, now out bid. And our destruction date, it's pushed to December, it's pushed to December, it's likely January, we're planning that in November, it's coming well, it's coming well. And then the other thing, Dan, and then the other thing, Dan, touch on the cameras, LPRs, LPRs.
A question about the three point nine, do they just write a check, do they just write a check, we have to spend it, or spend it, or?
That money is, that money is, you know, I'm not sure, I'm not sure, it's a reimbursement, it's a reimbursement on the count.
Do we get out of the, do they write a check like that, right now, today, twenty-nine?
Yeah, I, I.
It'd be nice to get it and put it, it'd be nice to get it and put it in the account as low as it can.
Give the interest back, give the interest back, you know, anyway. They don't give you free, they don't give you free.
It's a grant, it's not, it's a grant.
But the thing you need to understand, you need to understand, three point nine million dollars, sounds like a lot of money, and it is. You are not, you are not going to have, the train station, when that money is spent, when that money is. All you're gonna have, all you're gonna have, your plan to build, to build, and then ACE, and then ACE, to do the actual, to do the actual. Three, four million dollars.
How much?
Four, three, four, nine million dollars, nine million dollars. Just, just. To get you to the point, to get you to the point that you can build. Yes, you are, yes, you are.
ACE has six point one.
ACE has six point one.
It's later, it's later for the station, it's back station.
Okay, Dan, okay, Dan.
Yeah, just real quickly, yeah, just real quickly, I'm showing you, I can show you, real quick, real quick, an idea of the, an idea of the quality improvement that we're seeing. What you have upstairs, what you have upstairs, on the left side, on the left side. Is that Jackton and Colony, is that Jackton and Colony, right here, it's actually right, right here, it's actually right over here. So, two things that pay particular attention, number one, see there, a whole lot more detail on the left side image, on the left side, and also the frame rate, and also the frame rate. As you watch cars, as you watch the intersections, you can see kind of real-time motion, real-time motion on the left side. On the right side, there you're getting, on the right side, there you're getting, real stuttered, real stuttered.
Right side is, right side is, yeah.
Right, the right side is a camera, the right side is a camera, two thousand seven, two thousand seven years on those, which is just about age, is just about age, in terms of those age, in terms of those. The left side is, the left side is, if we just put another, another one up today, and then we're gonna start rolling that out, and start rolling that out. So that's, that's, that's that part, that's that part, license plate, license plate. Oh, we've started taking delivery, we've started taking delivery of that equipment. So we've got, yeah, here on hand now, and then the rest of it's, it's on its way. Begin installation, real soon, and we're looking to have, and we're looking to have completed, have that completed in November. The only exception there is, we're gonna have a couple of spots, we're gonna have a couple of spots, because we're actually gonna be putting, because we're actually gonna be putting readers on their poles. Just the layout of the intersection, the layout of the intersection, so that requires that. Always that, kind of a delay, always that, kind of a delay of that process. Those may, those two sites there, there's two sites there, that situation, that may take a little bit longer. Otherwise, everything's looking, otherwise, everything's pretty good, on to our, uh.
Those cameras that you put in, cameras that you put in, are the left-hand, are the left-hand cameras.
Yes, they're all, they're all, there's two of them that are different models, they all have the same image quality and the same, same performance.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank goodness I followed the directions, I followed the corrections, near my car, compact, compact.
Now you are, now you are, read your license, play for long, for long.
Borrow my neighbor's car, borrow my neighbor's car. Okay, okay.
What is going on, what is going on, ridge, ridge, where they dug up the street, dug up the street.
Oh, that's a, oh, that's a, I was just, I was just, sewer lateral, sewer lateral, connecting a sewer into the house, sewer into the house.
All that house is being built, house is being built, they gotta go.
Yeah, so there, so there, yeah, there was no, yeah, there was no, in front of that house. They said previously, one time where that lot, one time where that lot, going back to the alley, but nobody knows kind of where that was, it wasn't shown on our map, it wasn't shown. They had extended the main line, extended the main line. Yeah, yeah, they got, they got caught, yeah, they got, they got caught, yeah, that's what that is, yeah, that's what that is.
Thank you, council, council, Kevin, Kevin, Daniel, Daniel.
For the two of you that are, for the two of you that appreciate you being here, and everyone else who's here, and everyone else who's here.
We have value here, we have value here.
Appreciate you listening, appreciate you listening, so thanks.
And Vince, and Vince, Vice Mayor Zuber.
I noticed today, they're, I noticed today, they're putting traffic count, traffic count, wires out, around wires, places, play Zach Caltrans, but Zach Caltrans doing that.
No, that's us, no, that's us.
Got a few places, got a few places, yeah, what's going on?
Yeah, we were looking at the council, at Stockton, and second, and Stockton, enforced as well, enforced as well. As we're working through this, Stockton, as we're working on it, Stockton, just looking at the, looking at the possibility of adding signal, adding signal. At some time in the future, and then the other council, or the other council, or Decia, and Milgeot, Milgeot, just to see where we're at, just to see where we're at, with that, with that two-way stop right now. Two-way stop right now, and see where those warrants, but see where those warrants put us. Looking, looking to put a four-way stop, looking to put a four-way stop, if it warrants.
That four-way stop, that build, that manly, it might as well not even be there half the time, yes, yes. The only time, the only time, the only time, is if looks, luckily so far, luckily so far, if it looks, like somebody walking, like we want to. Then they will actually slow down, otherwise, if they're turn right, they're gone, they're gone.
Or tinted windows.
Turning, if they're going, if they're going, or on manly, or on manly, right on Milgeot, right on Milgeot, east on, east on Milgeot, turning, right on, south on manly. It's, man don't knock, man don't knock, you're gonna get hit, you're gonna get hit, it's nuts, it's nuts. Yeah, but then, but then there were two guys this morning, they didn't slow down. That's it, that's it.
Okay, I have nothing, and I have nothing, now we will, now, council, we will, we will go under the redevelopment, under the redevelopment, see it, see it again, roll call, roll call.
Director Dean Uker, Director Dean Andrew, Andrew Parks, Steve Parks, Vice Chairman Leo, Vice Chairman Leo Zuber.
Hominy, yes, I'm, yes, I'm here.
I'm Chairman Mike Ristuscha.
Pleasant, public discussion, anybody, anybody, it's not on the agenda, probably, probably, seeing nobody, seeing nobody. Two of the minutes, uh, July ten, twenty eighteen, meeting. Hold it, hold it.
My things, my things.
We can draw it out, we can draw it out, we can do it verbally, we can do it verbally. We can do it verbally, we have a motion, we have a motion, motion by, motion by, I, I, motion carrying, motion carrying, sent counter, sent counter. Motion by Mr. Zuber, Mr. Zuber, to the graph, second, to the graph, second, I, O, I, motion, pose, motion, carry.
We don't need this, we don't need, send it, send it, get a refund, get a refund.